Oh, yeah. It just makes it that much better.
You all want to run?
Oh, we could set something up. Yeah, she's not on yet. She's got a couple of minutes.
Okay, it's six o'clock. Why don't we go ahead and call to the Oregon May 18th meeting of the Brandon City Council? Dave, I would ask that you lead the audience in person there in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. Welcome to everybody. Christina, could you call the roll?
Clark. David.
Here.
Fish. Jorgensen. Cole. Parsons. Mayor Lombard.
Here. Okay, the first item of business is the approval of the agenda. The administration has requested to have item number F2 removed from the agenda. If I could have a motion to approve the agenda as revised. Motion second to approve the agenda as revised. Any questions? Christina, roll call.
Clark. David.
Aye.
Fish. Jorgensen. Cole. Parsons.
Okay, we have one set of minutes, the May 4th regular meeting of the City Council. If I could have a motion to approve that set. Motion second to approve the minutes of May 4th as presented. Christina, can you call the roll?
Clark. David.
Aye.
Fish. Jorgensen. Cole. Parsons.
Very good, motion carries. Item five is the approval of the bills and claims submitted with the agenda in the amount of $3,333,438.71 total.
Move to approve. Second.
Motion in a second to approve the bills and claims submitted with the agenda. Any questions or comments from council members? Hearing none. Christina, can you call the roll?
Clark. David.
Aye.
Fish. Jorgensen. Cole. Parsons.
Very good, motion carried. We have one plat on the consent calendar, if I could have a motion.
So moved.
The motion is second to approve the consent calendar. Christina?
Clark. David.
Aye.
Fish. Jorgensen. Cole. Parsons.
Very good, motion carried. We're down to seven a.m., public comments and input. Those wishing to address the council at this time may do so. I know that we have representatives, I think, from Alliance and Midco at the present at the meeting. I think what I'll do is have those people speak during the actual agenda item under D2, the franchise draft ordinance. So I would entertain anyone else that wishes to address the council, they may do so at this point. Start with anybody in person. Anyone on Zoom that would like to address the council? Okay, very good. Item number seven, B, is a public hearing on malt beverage license renewals. Quite a number of them. I'll just quickly read them off. Happy Jacks, Joker's Casino, Split Rock Sea Store, Coffee Cup Fuel Stop, number seven, Hidden Valley Golf Course, Lane Service, Casey's General Store, Expressway, Oak Ridge Nursery, Pizza Ranch of Brandon, Holiday Station Stores, Dollar General, Kingbird Coffee Shop, Paisley Pod, Dakota Star Casino. Brian, any comments or?
We have not received any comments. Move to approve. Second.
Motion is second to approve the malt beverage licenses, renewals as delineated. Any questions from the council?
Have any of these failed any tests at all?
No.
Other questions? Not, Christina?
Clark. David.
Aye.
Fish. Jorgensen. Cole. Parsons.
Good, motion carries. Moving on, old business, item number eight, the review of ordinance 606 and the corresponding resolution number 13-20. Brian, can you update us on that?
Yeah, fairly well, fairly good compliance that I'm aware of. The PD kind of checked, at least they didn't go in and count heads, but didn't seem to have any issues. The mayor indicated today that he'd had a couple of complaints on a couple of the businesses possibly being too crowded in a couple of them. The EOC, the Emergency Operations Center, is now going to, we had daily briefings up until this week, it'll be Monday, Thursday now, over in Sioux Falls. They're also moving out of the law enforcement center to, I think, the courthouse. The courthouse will be open for the public again on June 3rd, the day after the election. Other than that, we've got something for the baseball softball associations under parks to start looking at, or their plan for return to play in their leagues and tournaments.
I would make the same motion as last meeting where we rescind ordinance 606 and resolution 1320 and let the other regulatory entities oversee this. I think it gets really confusing with the 50% rule when they're adhering to the six-foot CDC rule. It's just, I think it is creating a lot of tattling, and especially as we move into the season where we have outdoor seating that doesn't count for the capacity as soon as somebody goes in for a refill on their potato laze or their coffee. It's potentially making that entity violate our ordinance. So I guess I would just like to see us back out of it and let these businesses follow their franchises, their orders, marching orders from the governor, the CDC, the FDA, the Division of Health, all of those.
I would also agree with that. I frequent in some places this weekend. I will tell you that I think the businesses' customers will dictate as much as any ordinance that we can put in front of it. And the businesses themselves will certainly accommodate the customers, and the customers will certainly dictate how they handle it. And they also have guidelines from the CDC, from other organizations. I just don't think an ordinance from us on top of all of that is necessary.
So I will second that. Did anybody second it? I'll second that, just for discussion purposes.
Okay, motion is second to amend or, I guess, repeal. Would that be the proper language? Brian?
I would think so. I did draft up resolution 14-20 that repeals ordinance number 606 as well as resolution 13-20. Just, I think, a point of order. It's not on the agenda. The agenda item is to review ordinance number 606, resolution number 13-20. The council can certainly vote on 1420 if you wish, but it wasn't on the agenda. And I'll refer to my memo from Friday that said if you wanted action on it, to please contact me. I was under the impression that we could rescind this without, during one of our reviews.
You can, by resolution.
I was too. That was a specific question that I had asked when we put it in place, if it could be rescinded effective immediately in the future.
Lisa?
24-hour notice requires things posted on the agenda we have review of. There is a legal question as to whether or not you can adopt a resolution that hasn't been posted, that you're going to have a resolution within 24 hours of the meeting. We're also in uncharted waters relative to this ordinance to begin with. So I say that relative to a lot of different legal opinions on powers related to being able to enact these. So the safest course of action would be to post that you're going to have a resolution 1420 to repeal the ordinance and the prior resolution. You're the ones that enforce the ordinance, so to the extent you want to adopt it today, if it's not legally enforceable, you're the ones who are enforcing it anyway. So you have to make the decision as to whether or not you're enforcing it. So you could adopt, for example, the resolution and make a decision to not enforce the prior ones and put this back on your agenda to the June meeting to repeal it with the 24-hour notice, that would be one option. Another option would be to set a special meeting and just have this on your packet and have a resolution posted. And that way, the council gives notice to the public that you're actually considering repealing it, because what we have in our prior ordinance is it's going to remain in effect until it's repealed by resolution. So we don't have the resolution on the agenda. So there are two courses of action you can take. The more appropriate one, in my opinion, is to do a posting of a resolution, 24-hour notice, but if you want to do the former with adopting the resolution, that would be up to you as well.
So a quick clarity question on that, Lisa. We have a work session scheduled on Thursday, so we could just do a special meeting before the work session?
Sure. And I didn't know you had that, and that would be the best way to take care of it, in my opinion. I'd rather have you do that, since then you're allowing the public to have the notice that you're looking at this, and that way people want to comment on repealing it, they would know that that's your intent.
I would be fine doing that as long as we add it as an agenda item specifically for Thursday's meeting.
If we did that, Brian, it would be effective immediately, then?
Correct.
Okay. Nice for Memorial Day weekend.
Okay. I do have a motion on the floor. I would ask our attorney what I'm supposed to do with this motion.
The motion be withdrawn, I think that's what council member Clark asked, so we don't need a vote on it because she withdrew the motion?
So is the motion withdrawn from the sponsors of it?
Correct.
Okay. Motion withdrawn. Anything further from council members on the review of ordinance 606? Could you go then, Brian?
Correct.
Okay. Moving on, item number nine, the standing committee reports. The golf course has some seasonal staff to hire. Carla Bamsey at $8.70 an hour, Megan Birch at $7.80 an hour, and Nicole Andrews at $9.30 an hour. I get a motion to approve those seasonal staff hires?
So moved.
Motion is second to approve the seasonal staff hires as outlined. Any discussion? Christina, call the roll.
Clark. David.
Aye.
Fish. Jorgensen. Cole. Parsons.
Okay, under the parks and recreation, we have seasonal staff recommendation to hire there, Dick Wolver at $13.50 an hour, Joe DeVitt at $12.30 an hour, Ethan Cushing at $11.30 an hour, and Ryan Barker at $11.30 an hour. Can I have a motion to approve those staff recommendations? Motion is second to other as delineated. Any questions? Christina?
Clark. David.
Aye.
Fish. Jorgensen. Cole. Parsons.
Okay, item B3 is the baseball and softball associations' plan to return to play guidelines. Brian, would you like to review those?
Yep, we'd met with baseball and softball a couple of weeks ago and asked them to develop a plan to get the season rolling for their leagues. They put together this plan fairly quickly that outlines those practices or those procedures that they would need to do or their fans will need to do in order to start the season. They're looking at practices starting June 1st through the 14th. You know, a list of things there, one team per field, stations at practice so you don't have groups, six-foot social distancing, no sharing of equipment, can't use the dugout in practice, don't bring treats, et cetera, no sunflower seeds, no spitting, maintain the six-foot distancing, and then practices are closed to the public, so parents and spectators aren't allowed at the practices. And then the season would start with league games starting June 15th. Pretty much the same thing. Social distancing. They've got different game times, with an hour and a half for games and then 30 minutes in between games so that we can minimize or they can minimize the number of individuals at the fields. Requiring the coaches to sanitize the benches, no sharing of equipment again, using their own balls, no balls will be shared between teams, wash the hands before and after games, no handshakes, fist bumps, et cetera, and then some distancing for the base coaches, the mound visits, the umpires, et cetera. No scoreboards is another big thing, as the controllers can't be sanitized, so the scores will be kept in the dugout by the coaches anyway.
Okay, I'm assuming that the council needs to approve this proposal by the associations?
They can. You know, on our phone call today with at least the administrators, most of the communities are asking their associations to come up with rules, and then they need to monitor their own rules. We'll certainly help the associations post signs at each field to encourage social distancing and the correct stuff. But I thought it was a pretty good plan that the associations came up with.
Yes, I just, I wanted to compliment softball and baseball for putting this together, and as Brian said, it was done quickly. And I want to thank Devon for his flexibility with his staff and trying to work through this process. It's going to be interesting, but they're very interested in making sure that everything goes well and working with us.
Is there a motion on the part of the council to approve the agreements as presented? There was a motion as second?
Yes.
Is that correct? Any further discussion? Christina?
Clark. David.
Aye.
Fish. Jorgensen. Cole. Parsons.
Motion carries. Item B4 is to approve a bid for the swimming pool improvements project?
Correct, we'd be looking at a bid date of June 9th.
Is there a motion to approve? Motion is second to approve the bid, proposed bid for the swimming pool improvement project. Any discussion? Christina?
Clark. David.
Aye.
Fish. Jorgensen. Cole. Parsons.
Motion carries, thank you. Item B5 is a proposal from DGR Engineering in the amount of $12,588 to do a survey on Aspen Park. Brian, if you want to review that?
It'd be both a boundary and a topo survey of Aspen Park. We need to, there's three separate parcels now that comprise Aspen Park, so we need to consolidate those into one to be in compliance with our ordinances, as well as we need a topo of the entire area so that we can use that to start laying out and figuring out where things go according to the master plan that was done last year.
Are we going to rezone that to institutional then?
Yes. So that's part of it, we need a legal description that's consistent.
So I would make a motion to approve that?
Motion is second to approve the proposal from DGR Engineering in the amount of $12,588 as proposed. Christina, are there any further questions? Christina?
Clark. David.
Aye.
Fish. Jorgensen. Cole. Parsons.
Okay, moving on to administrative. Item D1 is to approve the FEMA sub-recipient agreement. The motion to approve the agreement is presented in the packet. Motion is second to approve FEMA sub-agreement, sub-recipient agreement. Any questions from the council? Christina?
Clark. David.
Aye.
Fish. Jorgensen. Cole. Parsons.
Motion carries. Item D2 is a cable TV franchise draft ordinance update and plans by Alliance and Midco. We'll start with Lisa presenting her draft ordinance.
Mr. Mayor and Vicky, did you get the email I just sent with Lisa's talking points?
Yes, I did.
I did.
Okay.
So I was asked to come to the big microphone tonight, so I am up in front of you here. What I'm really here to do is update the council on what's going on with the cable franchise ordinances. It's been since about 1980 when the city of Brandon cable TV franchise ordinance went into effect. I started drafting those updates basing them off some other South Dakota cities. I anticipate the first reading of the ordinances will get to you June 1st, we'll do a second reading thereafter. The ordinances form the basis for an agreement with various cable TV providers. Currently, the city has one provider and only one provider, and our ordinances are outdated, that's why they're needing to be updated. They were written at a time where you could have an exclusive provider. You can no longer have an exclusive provider. We are governed by the FTC relative to things like this, so we need to update it. We received notice from Midcontinent Communications that they would like a cable TV franchise with the city. The current agreement with Alliance Communications is expected to expire this fall by its, I think, 30-year term. So I anticipate if we do the readings of the first and second for the new cable TV ordinances, that we will be doing franchise agreements with the two providers that have expressed interest on the July 1st meeting. What I'm asking tonight and what I'm needing from city council is really some input on how you want your ordinances drafted. The ordinances form the basis for the agreement, so what we have in our ordinances, you essentially regurgitate into your agreements. Federal law allows cities to obtain up to 5% of gross revenues from your franchise, cable TV franchise providers. It's essentially compensation for the ability for the cable TV franchise to have access to the rights of way, for example. Typically, that's passed on to the subscribers. Currently, in our franchise agreement with Alliance, we do not have franchise fees. I have been in communication with various cities in South Dakota, and there are other cities outside of South Dakota as well that do have franchise fees. For example, 5% gross revenue is currently set by ordinance and with agreement in Aberdeen, Mitchell, Pierre, Watertown, and Yankton. Huron uses 4%. City Sioux Falls just updated theirs last year, and effective January 1st of this year, they set theirs at 3%. Valley Springs has theirs at 3%. Brian collected for you and provided to you what the revenues are from these types of cities. Revenues that they're receiving yearly for their franchise fees range between $40,000 and $200,000, depending on how big your city is, and what percentage you're obtaining as gross revenue. Some possible estimates that Brandon has been able to forecast if the council wanted franchise fees, at 3%, it might be around $40,000. At 5%, around $65,000 a year of revenue that can be used into your general fund. So there is, just to let the So there is, just to let the council know, there is some current litigation going on across the country relative to what 5% means. 5% used to mean 5% plus other things, and I'm not going to get into all of what the other things apply to right now. But right now, what is capped is 5% of everything you get for free services and your gross revenue can't exceed the 5% by within your agreements. So there are things that we as a city are able to get for free from cable TV providers. And if we were going to get 5% and those things, then there'd be an issue of of trying to calculate down from that so that we don't exceed the 5%. Because this is all in litigation, if the city is wanting to do franchise fees, my recommendation when I'm drafting these would be to do something like the city of Sioux Falls does and some other cities so that you determine you can charge up to 5% franchise fees and then set by resolution every year or two what percentage you want. Because once we enter into these agreements, I expect we're going to cap them and that'll be another next point here at a certain or duration. So we're not coming back to you every two years on, okay, now what are we going to do relative to revising all the agreements and revising the ordinances? But if we set something like that where you want franchise fees, if we had a resolution every one or two years for the percentage, then you can always revisit. Is it 3%, 4%, 5%? Are we going to exceed the 5% because we now can do so because the United States Supreme Court made its ruling finally? It's not even close to that in the litigation process. So what I'm needing input from the council on are a couple of things tonight. Really, it's just franchise fees. Do you want the ordinance to have the capability to charge up to 5% for franchise fees and then use that as a revenue stream for various things you're doing with the city? And then really, what is the term of the agreement? And that's the easier one in terms of trying to draft the ordinances. But when I do a first reading, I'd rather have the input taken from you of what you want for term of agreement. Some of these franchise ordinances and agreements will say five years renewable for another five years. Some of these will say 15 years renewable. So if I can get some feedback on what the council would like to do, I don't want to spend more time and energy working on the franchise fee definitions of what gross revenue is, et cetera. If you don't want franchise fees, if you do, then I want to make sure we get a good definition. So that's a very brief synopsis. I do, I should tell you, I'm not a franchise fee attorney expert. I've done a lot of reading. I've talked with a lot of other city attorneys. I have a pretty good grasp of what's going on. The city of Aberdeen spent $65,000 on an outside attorney to draft their agreements and their ordinances at a time where in doing so, they thought they could exceed the 5% because that was several years ago. So I can't tell you, I have the expertise of a $65,000 attorney from Minneapolis, but I think of a pretty grasp, good grasp on the franchise laws. We do have representatives from Midco and Alliance Communications here too. And so they may be able to provide a little insight as well with what they do with their customers from various places across the state, but I would open up for questions and get some feedback from you.
So could we allow the franchise fee in the agreement but not necessarily have one at this point?
I would recommend that you have in the ordinance, you can charge up to blank franchise fees. And then you could, for example, by resolution, set that at 0%, 1%. But if you're thinking about doing franchise fees at all within an ordinance, my recommendation is that we have the ordinance, allow for it with the definitions of everything that need to be set in place. And then you can later by resolution and in the agreements, say what that's going to be. 1%, 5%, 3%. So you don't have to set the amount, but if you're at all thinking about it, I'd like the ordinance to say up to 5% and then let you decide the amount later by resolution.
I don't know that I'm really in favor of the fee, but I think I'd like to give the future councils that flexibility without having to rewrite the ordinance.
Lisa, I have a question. So with these, you're saying the franchise fee just goes into the general fund?
That's typically where it goes. You can do some capital grants and things like that that we, Brian and I talked about of not doing. So a capital grant going for infrastructure, for example, but then it becomes a lot more difficult to manage. So if we were going to do a franchise fee, the recommendation from staff would be just do the up to 5% and the money goes into the general fund, yes.
My question would be, and maybe Midco, somebody would be able to answer it. I believe with Sioux Falls, they do the 3%, but they also give a portion back to the school district as long with, as long, and also their communication, I think City Link and stuff. Is that something where if we were to do a franchise fee, if the school district, like, you know, something with, I'm just thinking as distance learning and all this stuff, if funds could go out to help the school district? I don't know. I just know I believe, like I said, somebody from Midco probably can clarify that. But I believe Sioux Falls gives a portion of that back to their school district.
The city of Sioux Falls does do a, I think it's a half percent to the schools and a half percent to another entity. I could look it up. And Midco could certainly tell you what they do. So that's something you could do by resolution if you wanted to. You wouldn't have to have that in your ordinance. And we could certainly have that dialogue with the school.
Before I ask Midco and/or Alliance to speak, I would ask any further comments from council members on their appetite for a franchise fee?
Question for staff would be, do we incur any costs for this right of way? I mean, if they, if they're using our right of way, does the city have any costs that they want to recover?
In design fees, I would say yes, because we have coordination and we have to know where their lines are at. And, you know, if there's any conflicts, then we ask them to remove them. Sometimes it's really expensive for them to move them, so we have to redesign something in the middle of the project. We've done that a couple of times already this year. So I wouldn't say it costs us a lot, but it does cost us in design fees.
I have a couple of questions. So when are we hypothetically seeing this would be effective?
I would, the ordinance would go into effect essentially end of June. The new franchise agreements, July. So I would anticipate that the first franchise fee could be received in August. That might be a better question for the cable TV providers.
Sure. And as far as the other communities that you checked into, were there any communities that did not?
There certainly are communities that do not. I can't tell you which ones don't because the ones I talked to all do. It's something that's authorized by federal law, so they all just essentially took advantage of that. So the other providers here probably tell you which ones don't. I just know that the ones that I provided to you do.
Okay. And then this is probably a question for the providers, but the, so I'm wondering where that money comes from? If it's, if it's a kind of a pass through to the the customer and rates are increased because of it? Okay, when is Midco starting in Brandon?
Well, they don't have a franchise agreement yet. So to the extent that they could start, it would be when a franchise agreement is entered into on both parties and when they have the capability with their lines and things like that.
Do I have a question for Tammy? So with all the construction that we're going to have going on, would that potentially increase our risk for incurring costs?
Are you asking just for Midco or all of them?
All of them.
All of them, yes. There's a lot of coordination that has to go through and we have to meet with them and put them on our plans and try to work around them the best we can. A lot of them do move, but some have said, well, when you get to this point, then we will move, which is great, but then it holds up our contractor at that point. So it does cause some conflicts and it does cost us some money.
Okay. So overall, I mean, to answer the mayor's question, I would be in favor of us doing some sort of franchise fee.
I think I would be open to it, like what Barb said. If there's a way, Lisa, that you could put it in there and like she said, the future city councils, whether we decide to put a fee in place or not, at least that option leaves it open for us. And I think it's something if we're going to charge a fee, it'd be nice to know. At least as a cable subscriber, I would like to know where it would be going, you know, type of thing. But I would be open to that. I kind of like what Barb said. If there's a way to maybe put it in there in the wording as you're drafting it.
I would just agree with that as well, not have something in there now, but have it be available for future.
And you said disagree or agree?
I would agree.
Okay.
With Barb's concept of being able to have it in there for the flexibility later, but not, but put it at zero for now.
If we're going to do something which I'm really not in favor of of it, it's another tax and it's just a pass through to the residents for, I'm not sure what. But if down the road, a council came up with a specific project or something that could be done with it, I don't want it to just disappear into the general fund, I guess. But I'd like the flexibility.
And just to hone in on your word tax, it's something that the consumer, the customer may pay. Taxes are completely different. It might feel like one. This is technically not a tax. I just want to make sure the residents understand it's not a tax. It's something that's authorized by federal law that is, yeah. There are a lot of due process issues with taxes, so I just don't want to get into that.
All right. I'll take that back.
And then in terms of terms, before, if I could just get some feedback on the term of the agreement? Does anybody have any thoughts on how long you'd want a franchise agreement to be? Because I'd rather have something in the first reading as opposed to the second or third.
What are you seeing in the other communities?
Five years renewable automatically, five years. The most would be 15 years without automatic renewable. So, you know, somewhere kind of between that five, 10, 15 years.
I like the five.
Okay, okay.
I'd be good with five and I guess I would maybe the lone vote, but I think we should consider doing something in that 3% to 4% range.
So I will draft something with the ability to, and I'll probably put in there by resolution so that you can set a, you can consider a amount at some later date, if that's now or later. But I'll, you can kind of think about it, having some of this information and the two cable operators may provide you some food for thought as well. So I'm going to step back unless, Mayor, do you have any more questions for me?
I just had a comment, if I may. As as mayor, I would agree with Mrs. Fish that I think it behooves this council to put into the resolution or into the ordinance agreement the ability to have that franchise fee in there. I would like to go on record that I am strongly, at this time, I am strongly against the fee currently. But I think we owe it to, as long as we're developing this resolution right now, we owe it to have the ability for future councils and/or this council to impose this franchise fee. So I would agree that we should have the ability to do that in in the resolution and in the ordinance, I'm sorry. And then also the term is fine, five up to 15 or whatever you decided there. At this point, I would ask Representative from Midco, maybe, to address the council? Any questions or comments that they would have?
Greetings. My name's Pat Mastell. I'm Vice President, General Counsel at Midco. I do pretty much all the franchising. I've been doing this for about 20-plus years. Probably have done about 200 or more of these franchises. So I want to throw out some some figures for you so you kind of can use that as your background when you think about this. We have about 350 franchises at Midco. About 230 of them have a franchise fee. So that would be about two-thirds of them have a franchise fee. Of the two-thirds that have that, 40% of those are at 5%. The other 60% are at 3%. There's a couple in there that are four and one is at two, but for the most part, it's 3% or 5%. There's also another fee that can be charged and it's called a peg fee. And that that can be a dollar, I think Aberdeen's is $2 per subscriber. And that specifically goes towards your public education and government channels. And it's regulated as to how it's used. The franchise fee does go into the general fund. It's up to you guys what you do with it. But we have 10 approximately franchises that have that. That's pretty rare that that is out there. The term of the franchise, we have, most of those that have five years go five years with an automatic five-year renewal unless the city council takes some action so that you don't have to see my lovely face in here in five years. But that's typical. The others are either a flat 10 or 15. The old franchises used to be 20 with a 20-year extension. You just don't see that anymore. Sioux Falls, Sioux Falls had a 2.5% franchise fee. Half percent went to the school. When they proposed to take it up to 5%, if you recall, there was a lot of consternation. There was a lot of ticked off people. And after evaluating it, they went to 3% with half a percent goes to the school and the school uses it for the school channel. And the other half percent goes to City Link, the city channel. And then the 2% goes to the city. They do have the resolution. I draft franchises for a lot of communities. The smaller towns ask me to just draft it for them. We always put that in there and then set it at zero because it's just so much easier. If they want to have it, everything's there. It's very simple. The only thing we ask is that if you do have a resolution, that you give us 90 days to institute it so that we can do the software, check all of, make sure everything's working properly. There's one other point on the franchise that needs to be considered, and that's the definition of gross revenue. Because you can have gross revenue on basic cable TV. You can have it on premium, basic and premium. You can have it on, the premiums are the HBOs and the Showtimes. You can have it on the full boat, which is everything that we charge, equipment. There's there are cities that have the franchise fee on the franchise fee. So if you have 5%, then you have 5% of the 5% gets added to it. And that one's really hard to explain to the consumer that if it's maximum 5%, how can you charge 5% times 5%? Then it comes to 5 and 1/4%. You can have it on advertising. That gets really difficult to compute because you take your, the population base and the percentages and it's, it's, it's really, I mean, it's done and it can be done, but it's really hard to explain to the customers. So anything in between, there's of, let's see, of the 232 that have franchise fees, 118 have it applied to only basic and premium services. And they don't have it on equipment and ad sales. So that's another thing that you can take a look at if you decide to have one. What do you want it on? Just the basic? Everybody will have the basic. Not everybody has the premiums. Not everybody has HBO. Not everybody has Tivo. Do you have any questions of me?
Just a question on service. I'm understanding that you're not going to have a local building, is that correct, for the franchise?
We have not decided that yet.
Okay, okay. All right. So let's say you do not have a building in in Brandon. You're located in Sioux Falls, so you're not very far away. If I call with a service issue, Pat, what, what, what are my expectations on that?
Probably not going to be any different than what you have now because we have several people that work for us as technicians that live in Brandon. So it shouldn't change. Up until COVID, we had a two-hour window. At one point in time, we had a 15-minute window that when we make an appointment for service, that's what time they're going to come there. So COVID kind of threw everything out of whack. And hopefully, I'm not going to use that term that everybody uses, but hopefully things will go back to some semblance of sanity.
Ordinance aside, with your capabilities, when are you looking at being up and running?
I know that they started construction on the main line coming out to Brandon last week. And I drove on Rice Street and they were at Veterans Parkway. They had gotten that far. Probably, construction in town will probably start, I think your first meeting is this, is tomorrow, isn't it? Tomorrow, they're going to have weekly meetings. I'd expect to see September-ish.
I have a couple more questions if you're okay. So, you know, Alliance has been here a long time. They're very active in the community. I'm anticipating that Midco would do the same?
Yes, we have a Midco Foundation that does a lot of donations. Just about two weeks ago, donated over $250,000 to various food banks in the region. They're very active. I know that Andrew Curly is here. Do you have the list that, I know we just paid for in support of the new scoreboard at the stadium? The foundation does a lot of things like that, so yes.
And not necessarily just money. I'm looking for representation on our boards, on our chambers, that sort of thing. I would anticipate you'd be a good partner with us.
Absolutely. We have a, we call it Midco Axe, and we all have T-shirts. And whenever we go out and do volunteer work, we have the T-shirts on it. And it's, it's encouraged, it's encouraged to be doing that during work time, too. For example, my administrative assistant asked me if it was okay if she sewed masks, you know, during work time, and I said absolutely. I mean, if that's not a community service, what is? So, yes.
So on that franchise fee, that's just a pass along thing?
Yes, it is. That's a pass along. I'll be honest with you, it does not have to be. It, we have the option of doing that. I have never heard of any company that does not pass it along.
Come on, you could be the first one to start. You could start a trend. And my final question is, you are a for-profit privately-held company?
We are a privately-held company. We hope, like anybody else that's privately-held, to be for-profit. Nobody is in business to break even or to lose money, so yes. Our, we have, we have basically the two owners, the two individual owners. One is from Sioux Falls originally, Pat McAdara and Steve Grosser. They live in the Twin Cities now. And then the other half of our company is owned by Comcast. Used to be owned by AT&amp;T, used to be owned by TCI.
So Alliance is, we, we are the owners of Alliance, we're the?
Yeah, as I understand it, yes.
Yeah, okay, all right. So a little different, what do I want to say, business structure?
Correct.
Okay, because they have the ability to give back those capital credits?
Yeah, they do capital credits. We do the foundation and grants.
Okay, great, thanks.
And we encourage any nonprofit, I mean, the, the foundation has certain rules, but it's basically nonprofits. We encourage nonprofits to apply. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Pat. Is there a representative from Alliance that would like to speak to the council?
Well, I didn't touch anything, but let's just be safe.
Good evening. Paul Van De Berg, Business Relations with Alliance Communications and resident of Brandon since 2002. Yes, can echo a lot of the same things that he did. But if you have questions or comments, or is it going along, please stop as we go through these. Yeah, we've had the franchise here for many years, and it's coming up for renewal this year as well. On the franchise fee, we are neutral on that. And again, it is a pass along, so it will affect our customers. If that is something you decide that is what's paid, maybe a little bit step back and think about what cable TV has been doing and the trend that is going with cable TV. So when you think of franchise fee, there's definitely been a cord-cutting movement. People are definitely moving more towards the internet for streaming, so we have less cable subscribers and probably see that as a trend that will be continuing. Anytime you add on any kind of extra cost, we know that's going to increase that more. So just think about when you're figuring percentages. It's definitely something we can do. Currently, the highest that we pay in any town is 3%. We are in a much smaller scale. We're a rural cooperative, again, member-owned company. So we have 20. About 40% have franchise fees, again, with the highest being 3%. So if you feel that's what's best for your general coffers, but I would ask that you do think about what's best for the citizen on that. On the cable TV, on their bill, under their cable TV section, it will say franchise, City of Brandon franchise fee. So they will see that. If they have questions with that, then that could also generate calls to the city. Just things to be considered and aware of. The term, we generally do 15 years, but we are very open to that, too. If you see a five or 10 or renewable clauses as the best benefit, that is, of course, fine. Would too appreciate a 90-day notice for the calculations and getting that into our system. In the other towns that we do it, we pay, that percentage is based on a paid tier of subscription. As you mentioned, all those other things get really hard to calculate. So there's like 12 different listings of things you can have a franchise fee on, but would encourage you put that on a paid subscriptions of different tiers of levels, your basic and the higher ones from there. Questions or comments?
I do, I, so I have an in-general question.
Yes, Jim.
So the franchise fee is only on the cable TV service? It's not on internet? It's not on phone? Only on cable TV?
Correct. Internet is an unregulated industry, so it's not necessary. Obviously, that's where the trend is going. But when cable TV started, when franchise fee started, what was the hot thing? Cable TV, and you saw it as a growing industry, so, yeah, it's a very good question. In terms of giving back to the community, as Barb mentioned, we are cooperative, so you do get your annual capital credit check that we're very proud of doing every year. We also have our Keep the Change Fund where any nonprofit or community group can apply. That's your bill being rounded up, so that's actually our customers' money. So we give money out to that. We meet quarterly. Very involved in the community and will always continue to be that. It's been a great relationship and partnership for decades. Comments or questions as we go through that? Thanks to Lisa for working with us on that.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Okay. I think, do we have the direction we need to proceed with the drafting of the ordinance? I think we do.
I do. I'll have something at the next meeting.
Any other questions from council? Administration?
Nope.
Very good. Moving on to item D3. We have a wage adjustment for Tammy Vanderbeek to $21.61 an hour. I got a motion. Motion is second to adjust Tammy Vanderbeek to $21.61 an hour. Christina?
Clark, David.
Hi.
Fish, Jorgensen.
Cole, Parsons.
Motion carries. Item D4, we have a proposed agreement with Alliance Communications for telephone and internet services to enter into a five-year agreement with a 20% additional discount. Is there a motion to approve that agreement as presented?
It's all moved.
Motion is second to approve a five-year agreement with Alliance Communications as presented. Any discussion on the part of the council?
I just wanted to say I'm going to recuse myself because maybe you've seen the commercials. I'm famous, huh?
So how many, what is, what is roughly the savings, roughly?
It's about $4,000 a year.
Do we have an agreement in place now?
No.
So, I mean, I think probably an obvious question with Midco just walking out. I mean, do we need to be fair and give them the opportunity to bid it as well?
This, this is for telephone.
Right.
I don't think Midco offers telephone.
Don't they?
I, I don't know.
Oh, okay. Scratch that then.
Any other questions? Not. Christina?
Clark, David.
Hi.
Fish, Jorgensen. Recusing himself. Cole, Parsons.
Motion carries. 401, did I hear, Christina? Or did I mishear that?
It's five to one, well.
Five to one?
With one recused himself.
Oh, okay, I got you.
Yeah.
So, motion is carried, go.
Yes, motion carried.
Thank you. Item D5, we have to appoint a replacement election worker, Catherine Davis, to replace Rose Anger-Bretson. If I can have a motion to approve that? Motion is second to approve Catherine Davis to replace Rose Anger-Bretson on the election worker boards. Any questions? Not. Christina?
Clark, David.
Hi.
Fish, Jorgensen.
Cole, Parsons.
Motion carries. Behind the streets, item E2, we have a Transit 5311 amendment to approve. Do you have a motion? Motion is second to approve Transit 5311 amendment as presented. Any questions from the council? Comments? Not. Christina?
Clark, David.
Hi.
Fish, Jorgensen.
Cole, Parsons.
Motion carries. Item E3, there's a proposal for the Brandon Transit from ROC S Management Company. Brian, would you like to review that agreement?
Sure. If you remember, InterLakes, who currently operates the transit system for us, is no longer doing it. They've, they've consolidated what their, their key components of their operation are, and transit is not one of them anymore. InterLakes serves underprivileged communities in the area. So they're, they're focusing more on housing rehab and weatherization, et cetera, head start youth programs than their, than transit. ROC, as indicated in their letter, they manage 15 transit systems throughout the state. Christina and I met with ROC as well as Brookings to talk over, you know, kind of their philosophies, get where they're at with managing their transit systems. In addition to that, Scott Fink, who currently works for InterLakes, will be transitioning over to ROC to run their transit. Scott's worked at InterLakes or managed our transit system for? Yeah, eight years now, so he's, he's very familiar with it. City Attorney Marso and I just had a discussion about contracting for transit system. We need to do a little more research on whether or not this needs to be bid out or is it a professional service? I'm not sure of any community that bids out their transit service, but we'll, we'll dig into that. But this is just from Peter Smith from ROC expressing interest. Like I said, Christina and I met with both of those providers. We're more comfortable with ROC. I think their, their mission aligns more with how we operate our transit system as well as Scott's taking over their transit system at ROC. So no, no action at this point in time, as City Attorney and I will continue to look at contractual obligations.
Any questions from council members to the administration? Hearing none, we'll continue forward with item E4. We have a pay application number nine on the Holly Boulevard project from first-rate excavation in the amount of $336,121.10. I can have a motion to approve payout number nine? Motion is second to approve payout number nine for the Holly Boulevard project, first-rate excavating. Any questions?
Yeah, Tammy, can you kind of give us an update on that, please?
Sure. Concrete is all poured. They do need to replace a driveway approach and a couple panels of sidewalk. The mass are out for the railroad, and they're waiting on some electrical work done this week. Other than that, we have a couple trees to plant and some seed to put down, and it should be wrapping up here pretty soon. So they'll street sweep and clean it up a little bit and then re-stripe it.
Any other questions? Christina?
Clark, David.
Hi.
Fish, Jorgensen.
Cole, Parsons.
Okay, item E5. We have the Rushmore Reconstruction Project Engineering Amendment with DGR in the amount of $335,040. I can have a motion to approve that agreement? Motion is second to approve a group amendment with DGR Engineering Firm on the Rushmore Reconstruction Project. Questions? Comments?
This, this would be for final design on Phase 1 of the Rushmore area, and those phases are broken down. I just lost my page. Thank you, on page 99.
That project is scheduled to be bid out this fall, Brian?
Correct. So construct, well, it'd be probably, we always aim for that January, February bid date if we can hit it. And then construction would be considered next year.
So just this phase alone is 5.9 million?
Yep, and that includes all the engineering and a 10% contingency.
Future phases are broke down to?
Three more?
Yeah, we could break it down in three more.
Yeah, the future ones are, that's not all next time. So that's all broken down into like three other phases, and those are a lot less.
Four, four projects.
Four projects.
Now, we've talked about alternating years on those, so we don't do it every year.
Are sidewalks going in on this project?
Yes.
Further questions? Christina?
Clark, David.
Hi.
Fish, Jorgensen.
Cole, Parsons.
Motion carries. Item E6 is a proposal from DGR Engineering Firm to perform a survey and preliminary design on the Ironwood Street going into the park. The amount of $1,776. If I can have a motion to approve that? Motion is second to approve the proposal from DGR Engineering for Ironwood Survey and Preliminary Design. Questions on the council?
Tammy, can you just kind of explain what that is?
Sure. That's the second entrance into Aspen Park. So it would be doing the survey from Sioux to the park and then doing some preliminary engineering, so we have good cost estimates and can figure out if we're going to assess this or not.
Do we have a timetable of when we expect that second entrance to be there?
I think it's been wanted, yeah, yesterday. But if we're going to do the special assessment, that definitely takes some time. So we'll do the preliminary engineering, see how much it's actually going to cost, do the survey work in the next couple months here, and then we'll bring it back to council and talk about timeline and schedule.
Other questions? Not. Christina?
Clark, David.
Hi.
Fish, Jorgensen.
Cole, Parsons.
Thank you. Motion carries. Item E7 is a?
What's that?
Was there a question?
Nope.
Okay. Item E7 is a bid for Transit Bus Number 7. We had one loan bid for $300 from Tammy Janzma. Is there a motion to approve that? Questions or comments? Christina?
Clark, David.
Hi.
Fish, Jorgensen.
Cole, Parsons.
Motion carries. F1, we have Payment App Number 3 on the Well Number 8 project in the amount of $127,644.26.
Hi.
Jorgensen?
Hi.
Cole?
Parsons?
Next, we have a payout number three, final payout to Metro Construction in the amount of $88,404.04 for the Aspen Boulevard Force Main Repair Project. I can have a motion?
One comment on that real quick is it's not a final. We're still doing a little bit of negotiations on that final price. So this will be the third payout, and the next one will have the fourth and final.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion is second to approve payout number three to Metro Construction in the amount of $88,404.04. Any further questions? Christina?
Clark?
Hi.
David?
Hi.
Fish?
Hi.
Jorgensen?
Hi.
Cole?
Parsons?
Very good. Motion carries. Item F5, we have a change order number one on the core reconstruction project, adding $30,250.06 to the project. Can I have a motion to approve change order number one?
So moved.
Motion is second to approve change order number one on the core area reconstruction project in the amount of $30,250.06. Any questions or comments from the council?
So what, what is that for?
A lot of small little items, like removing trees. There was a fence that needed to be removed, and a easement, there was a shed that needed to be removed. I mean, once you start uncovering some of the dirt in this core area, there are little things that just pop up here and there, so this just kind of has all of those odds and ends.
Other questions? Christina?
Clark?
Hi.
David?
Hi.
Fish?
Hi.
Jorgensen?
Hi.
Cole?
Parsons?
Lastly, item F6, we have a payout number two on the Brandon area, core area reconstruction in the amount of $1,335,579.06 to Sioux Cup Construction. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion is second to approve payout number two as presented to Sioux Cup. Questions?
How's this one going, Tammy? It's hard to keep track of all these.
This one's moving really fast. They have the underground utilities almost complete in Phase 1A and 1B. We are working through one sewer service yet that's holding this up, but other than that, a lot of it is gravelled. In Phase 1A, they have all of the curb and gutter in, and they are working on driveways and sidewalks, so in the next couple weeks, I think it'll change pretty drastically.
Other questions? Comments?
Oh, now, one more thing on Phase 1C, that last little piece. Our underground contractor is going to leave the site and work on a different project out of town, and they plan to come back maybe the end of June or early July, and that's when we would take out the rest of Dogwood and First. So we're going to let the general contractor go through and catch up on putting the street back together before we dig anywhere out. But that last phase is going to go a little bit slower because they're not going to have as many crews out here at that time, but the plan is still to get it done this year.
Christina?
Clark?
Hi.
David?
Hi.
Fish?
Hi.
Jorgensen?
Hi.
Cole?
Parsons?
Motion carries. Any new business? We have the financial statements for the month of April 2020 from Christina. Any comments? Christina?
I would just comment on, you know, we don't know a lot on sales tax now. Our January, February, March was pretty good on sales tax, so our April was down a little bit, but we are still up for the year. I would expect to see May, more change in May and June. Sales tax is always kind of a couple months behind, so we'll see those coming in, and as I do, I'll get you a heads up on that.
Do we have any update on the absentee ballot?
That's my day, about every day is absentee ballots. So far, we've done 774 absentee voting. Of that, 729 have been by mail, so it's busy. They're constantly coming in my email, and we are getting them out about as fast as would they come in. The county is a little bit behind, so everybody trying to catch up, and they're trying to catch up, so I know the ones I'm receiving today, the county stamped received about a week ago, so they're getting there. It sounds like the county had about 30,000 forms come in, so...
Quick clarity question for our work session on Thursday with planning and zoning that night. Did we decide on a time? 5:15 or...
Five or 5:15.
Yeah.
He knew it was me, we'll be here. Yeah.
Well, we had done a special meeting before, right? Maybe five or...
Any other new business?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion is second to adjourn at 7:14 PM. Christina?
Clark?
Hi.
David?
Hi.
Fish?
Hi.
Jorgensen?
Hi.
Cole?
Parsons?
Motion carries. Thank you, everyone.
Wednesday, Thursday? Thursday? Do we do Monday? Sure.